I'd like to call this meeting to order for the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors, excuse me, for October 10, 2023. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Hall?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
Belka? Layland?
Here.
Everyone, please join us in a moment of silence. We reflect on our actions here today. Thank you. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one is the agenda received as proposed or as amended.
So moved.
Second.
They're moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, agenda's received. Item two is public comments. Is there anyone in the audience today that would like to speak on public comments, something that is not on today's agenda?
Yes.
Please give your name and address. You have about three minutes.
My name is Kendall Daniels. I come before you as a taxpayer of the county. I am aware that you guys have a policy, current to date, section 204.7, at the unemployment of relatives. It is in the policy of the county to not employ any relative of an elected official, department head, or any employee with the supervisory responsibilities. The employment relatives in the same area organization may cause serious conflicts, problems with favoritism, and employee morale. In addition to claims of partially in treatment at work, personal conflicts outside of the work environment can be carried into day-to-day working relationships. Relatives of persons currently employed by Blackhawk County may be hired only if they will not be working directly under the supervising of a relative. Blackhawk County employees cannot be transferred into such a reporting relationship. For the purposes of this policy, a relative includes the following specific relationships: father, mother, son, daughter, grandfather, grandmother, brother, sister, uncle, aunt, first cousin, nephew, niece, husband, wife, father-in-law, mother-in-law, and son-in-law.
Oh, good. I was just gonna say, I just wanted to be sure to tell you.
Yep. You guys currently have a department head and the maintenance building supervisor that currently has his son-in-law working directly under him, which you guys implicate right here. It is in your policy. It is specifically in your policy and frowned upon. So therefore, you guys are elected officials. I don't see how this corrupt action got involved, but as paid elected officials, I come before you. As a taxpayer, as paying part of your salaries, I stand before you, and I accept, I accept nothing but you guys to do your job, see how this act got to where it's at, and dismantle this act. This employee should not be under his direct supervision. You board members have given him time limits to find him placements in other work areas, and that time has gone and passed with no recourse. So I rest my statement. As, as a taxpayer, two of you elected officials are up this fall. I accept that you guys do your job as what you're paid to do. That is all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak during public comments? Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to claims and payments. Resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks against the various settlement of such claims as allowed.
So moved.
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Mr. Veder?
Good morning, Board. This week, we are paying bills in the total amount of $423,502.11, and of that, $5,578.64 is being paid from the 60-40 fund. Everything appears to be in order. Do we have any questions?
Hearing none, please answer as your name is called.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Belka? Layland?
Yes. Item four, receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, county engineer. October 1st is the time when our mortar grater blades are out on the gravel road system to prepare the roads for the gravel roads for winter. That is what our dust control permit states, that we can be out after October 1st to start preparing the roads for winter, putting the windrows away, as we call it, so spreading the rock evenly over the road. We are beginning that process. It is still a bit dry, so there may be more dust than usual. We're hoping with the coming rains this week that that really helps us out to get those, that gravel bound back together before it's, before any deeper frost sets in. I also wanted to let you know about some visits to some local maintenance facilities, public works facilities. On October 17th, I have scheduled my department and yourselves, I've invited you as well. And also, October 31st, the first shop we will visit on the 17th is the City of Waterloo Public Works. And then October 31st is the City of Cedar Falls Public Works. Please join us if you are able. I would also like all of you to visit us at our Longfellow Shop sometime in the month of November, maybe right after a board meeting, if all five of you could make it, or four of you. And I will coordinate with Grant to see if that would be like a continuation of the Board of Supervisors meeting, but I'll be working with you all to see if we can find a date in November, either like the second or third week in November. Can I answer any questions at this time?
And all those meetings are supposed to be, are typically scheduled after the board meeting, so they'd be on Tuesdays following.
Right. Yes. There, I've told Waterloo and Cedar Falls to expect us about 10:30-ish or somewhere in there. Thank you.
If three or more of us want to go, we can just do a continuation of those meetings, too.
Yeah. And we have done that before, so I can say that worked well, so.
Good morning, Board. Roy Giving, Facilities Director. Just wanted to share with you, we did receive the abstract for the Raymount Building, so that is good news. We've been waiting for some time on that. So I did pass it over to Mike, and we'll kind of take it from there. So hopefully, we can get that processed and moved along.
I do have a little question of whether it's completely updated. I have to take a second look at it, but it looks like it might be just through December last year.
Okay.
And perhaps that's the last transaction on it, but I just wanted to raise that issue.
Okay. Also, I wanted to share with you, this Thursday, we have another meeting with InVision to go over the remodel projects on second floor and on first floor. We feel we are getting down to the point where we're about ready to present our final ideas to the, to the Board. I know that the auditors, the treasurers, the elections have all been working very hard on putting together particularly their storage needs. That's been the big factor in this project. So InVision has received all of that information now, and we can start really plugging that into the final design. So hopefully, we'll be able to get that in front of you folks here not too long, so.
Could I ask this question? I said, there's been, you know, several discussions, I think, with the Board and among different ones of us, too, regarding the public health renovations or whatever we wanted to consider for that building. And there'd been some interest in having an engineer or architect or something getting involved in that before we went too much further down the road, just to take a look at the facility and see what could be done. Are there, I don't mean to put you on spotlight, say, today, but is that something you could report to us in the next week or so, I guess, of if that's possible, and could we do something?
Yeah. Actually, I do have a meeting lined up for next week with a local architect, just to go through some, some ideas, some of the information that we've gathered through our meetings with the different entities over at the Pinecrest facility. So that's going to take place. I don't have a day yet, but we did commit to doing that next week, and hopefully, soon after that, we can get that information back to the Board.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
I am Wes Pilkington, Chair of the Blackhawk County Board of Health. I'm here today to formally introduce Kaitlin Emrick as the Blackhawk County Public Health Director, effective as of yesterday. Kaitlin has shown incredible leadership during her time as deputy director and interim director. The Board was thrilled to be able to hire her full-time. Kaitlin is a strong leader and innovator. Her, one of her primary goals, as she starts in this position, is to strengthen her relationships within the community. The Board feels strongly that she's a fantastic fit to carry out the mission and values of Blackhawk County Public Health. Thank you.
Thank you, Wes. Go ahead, let's speak. We got, we kind of jumped the gun on you a little bit last week, so.
Thank you, Wes, for those very kind words. I don't have an update for you today, but I just wanted to say that I'm really excited to start in this role. And, you know, I've worked with the Board of Health for a while now, and the Board of Supervisors for a while now, and I think you guys know me well. So I look forward to continuing in this role and leading the department. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other updates in the room? Anyone on Zoom that would like to update us today? All right. Hearing none. Item five, minutes approved for October 3, 2023.
So moved.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Moved, same sign. Minutes approved. Item six, consent agenda. The following items are acted upon by a single resolution unless there's something on there that someone wishes to discuss further.
So moved.
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Please answer as your name is called.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Belka?
Hall?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Item seven, other business. Resolution that the Blackhawk County endorses and supports the Grow Solar Cedar Valley Group Solar Buy Program in an effort to make solar power more affordable for homeowners and small businesses in our community. We allow Grow Solar Cedar Valley to use the Blackhawk County logo on promotional materials. We also allow for the Blackhawk County Alternative Energy Committee to co-host community educational events with Grow Solar Cedar Valley in one of our, well, in one, at least one, if that's necessary, but in one of our county buildings powered by solar electricity.
So moved.
Second.
Should've let you read the resolution.
Yeah, that's all right.
That's kind of been great. So moved and seconded.
Yep. They were here last week with an update on the program, and we simplified the resolutions to kind of reflect where they're at in, in, in things. And so it's really just allowing the use of a, kind of our endorsement to add more credibility to it, and, and hopefully, we'll, we'll co-host something to showcase one of our solar investments.
I know I followed up or talked to Patrick, and I'm after the meeting, too, and he had mentioned the Pinecrest invitation that you'd extended in doing something at Pinecrest. He was, and he mentioned also any help we could have with promoting the event and getting the word out. And I said, as soon as he put something together on that, he thought it'd be maybe, he was looking at dates for November 15th or 16th.
Mm-hmm.
So to let us know, so we could start working on promoting that for him, so. Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I got one question, Linda. Did I understand that any meeting held in a county building will be joint with a county employee or elected official?
Yes, the Alternative Energy Committee was going to be cosponsoring and would be there, and that was one of the questions. I followed up with him as well, just saying, you know, the setup and takedown and some employee being there would be necessary, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes. Item B, discussion on possible board action regarding the best bid results from the RFP for jail medical, medical and mental health services as recommended by the Jail Medical Mental Health RFP Review Subcommittee and Captain Nate Naff.
Good morning, Gordon. Nate Naff, Jail Administrator. Back on September 25th, the evaluation committee met and went over the three proposals we'd received for the medical and mental health RFP. That Subcommittee commissed of, consisted of myself, Michelle Weedner, Kaitlin Emrick, Tom Ikis with Blackhawk Grandi Mental Health, Christine Kemp, CEO of Peoples Community Health Clinic, and Vicki Miller, the Executive Director of Pathways Behavioral Services. We evaluated the three proposals on six criteria: responsiveness to the specifications, capabilities and qualifications, clarity and completeness, ease of implementation, proposed staffing, and the cost of their proposal. There's a total score of 100 points available on that, and the scoring that the Committee came up with for the three companies was Naff Care with 90 points, Advanced Correctional Healthcare with 72 points, and Elevate with 47 points. I know earlier, I sent each of you a breakdown under each of those categories. If you want me to go into any of those, I'll be happy to do that for you. But otherwise, based on the totality of the scoring and on behalf of the Subcommittee, I am recommending that we go with Naff Care for our contract.
I know that was a part of the RFP, but just for clarification, can you restate the six criteria?
Yes, absolutely. responsiveness to the specifications, the capabilities and qualifications, clarity and completeness of the response, ease of implementation, proposed staffing, and the overall cost of the project.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
I assume it took you a little while to write the report, I was gonna say.
Yes, it did. And the big part on there, we'd, we'd ask for three references for each one. You'll notice that there's two each from Advanced Correctional Healthcare on Naff Care. I'd reached out to the third on those, but didn't get an answer back. Elevate didn't have three references for us to contact, which was one thing that hurt them, and their thing was just the lack of experience in, in the field.
Are there any questions, I guess, or comments?
I mean, it is, it is what it is, really, so it's.
And then, too, I know if you made it through there, but one thing, we absolutely reserve the right to negotiate once we do select a vendor. Naff Care, from what they currently have, they have added in, in this proposal, an extra nurse practitioner within the jail. I honestly don't know if that position is needed, so my hope is that we'll be able to negotiate that back out, which will obviously result in savings off of what that cost is. We'll see what their stance is on that, but my hope is to, to get that back out of there for us.
So you haven't had that conversation with them yet?
No, I, I was waiting to negotiate with anybody on anything, depending on what the Board's decision was on this.
When they had that position added, did they give any explanation, since they're very familiar with, I guess, what we?
They didn't. They laid out in their proposal that they were adding one extra nurse, which is for overnights, which I'm perfectly fine with. I think that's, that's a needed addition for us. For that, I'm gonna guess it has something to do with, right now, they have a doctor come in about nine hours a week, doctor or nurse practitioner. To eliminate that and bring one in 40 hours a week, it honestly would be beneficial for us, because when, right now, if there's an inmate that needs to go to the hospital, go to the doctor or whatever, if their doctor's coming the next day, if something happens overnight, typically, they can wait and he'll see that provider in the morning. Otherwise, we have to run that person out to the emergency room and have them. So it, so it is a drain on our staff, and it's more difficult for the inmate, for everything else to do that with. Again, is that to the tune of $150,000 a year that it's costing us, or whatever they've got factored on that? Probably not. Like I said, I think we can hopefully get that out of there, but they didn't list their reasoning, so that'll be something that I'll discuss with them, if we choose to go forward with them.
Okay. Appreciate you doing that. Thank you. Mr. Little, have you got any questions or comments?
Well, the only thing I was gonna say is, first off, I want to thank the Committee for putting their time in and doing their work diligently. In all honesty, we've gone through this before, and Naff Care is the only game in town realistically. They kind of have a monopoly on this type of a services, and once you get involved with them, you're pretty much stuck. I'm not a supporter of Naff Care, especially what they did to the county a year ago, middle of contract, raise their rates 35% because they know they can. I know Supervisor Truca said that we're gonna, they're gonna out-cost us here in the future. We're not gonna be able to afford it. We'll always be able to afford it. We either raise taxes, or we can cut services, or cut other budgets within the Sheriff's Department to pay for this rising healthcare cost. So again, there really wasn't any choice. I won't support Naff Care today, because frankly, I, I just don't trust them anymore on what they did last year.
Is there anything in the, I was gonna say, in the contract, I would assume there would be, that says that they'll abide by the rules? Because we know, we had that issue with them as far as their terms.
Much like the same clause that they would have pulled in last time. There's, I forget if it's, I think it's a 90-day out that they'll have, which is what they exercised last time. There's not really a renegotiation clause in the contract, but they can come at us, and any company that signs this could come at us and say, well, we're gonna exercise that 90-day out if you don't. So I mean, they've almost kind of got us, our feet over the fire at that point, that, and that's where it's at now. Again, I know they came at us last year with more money, and then unfortunately, kind of like when we had the Vice President up here talking, by putting it out for bid, it actually went up even more than what we were at then.
I think, yeah, I think we all expected that.
Not trying to, yeah, not trying to say, I told you so or anything, but just pointing out that it's, and what they said was gonna happen.
When they have to, yeah. That's what we're finding when people are rebidding, that, you know, that is gonna, I guess, yeah. 90 days, is that the typical, too, for such a, I mean, such a large project and, you know, services that they provide? Is 90 days a typical for this type of?
I think it is typical. Michelle and I actually did discuss bumping that up when we were working on the RFP. I think we ended up leaving it at 90 days. I'd have to go through it to double-check and make sure, but.
Sure. I was just thinking, six months.
And obviously, we haven't signed the contract yet, so if we wanted to up that, we could. Problem is, we're also bound to that, so if they would do something that we deemed egregious and wanted them out of there, we're gonna be subject to that same, whether it's 90 days, 180 days, whatever term we set works both ways.
Sure.
And I guess I understand Tom's hesitance to, to sign with Naff Care again, otherwise we had, you know, two other companies there. You can look through them. ACH is, they put together a very strong proposal for us, but they start off at about $3 million a year as opposed to the, I think it was, what, 2.4 that Naff Care was at, and then only, and they go up substantially from there. And otherwise, we had Elevate's proposal there, which, like I said, unfortunately, and I know Bob Lincoln's done a lot of great things for the community, and I have no doubt he will continue to do so. At this point, we just didn't feel like Elevate was prepared to take on, take on the medical needs of the Blackhawk County Jail, so.
Are there some services that Elevate performs in the jail now at all, or?
Not really. I'm gonna work with us on some of the, the auxiliary stuff, but probably nothing inside the jail right now.
Thank you. Well, because you're mentioning this, going back to them, I was gonna say, is that something that we would take action, should take action on today, or would you like to have that discussion with them?
I think whether that position is in there or out there, Naff Care gives us the best, the best choice that we have here. So my recommendation would be to go ahead and approve them as our vendor, and then just knowing that I'll try and see if I can negotiate that back out.
Legal counsel, would you agree with that, I guess, too, that, rather than, I'm just thinking is our leverage if we do want to, and if you feel strongly that it should be done, should we, is that the way we should go? Probably, just an opinion, please.
So at this point, you're, you're presented with three choices. I don't see any advantage to waiting. If you're gonna go with the same option, waiting until after the negotiation is complete. Now, once the negoti, since it is permitted that, that the Sheriff's Office do this negotiation, the, even though you've approved it, the contract isn't entered until after that's complete, one way or the other. So, but I don't see any problem with approving it today.
Nate, did the RFP require this extra position, or mention it?
No, it did not. It actually, we, we said we wanted the basic amount of coverage for 24/7, and we wanted. We left it up to each vendor to provide how they would provide that staffing. So all three companies had fairly, I guess, a pretty wide variety of how they were going to do that staffing.
I think unfortunately, the real road to, to cost savings for, for jail healthcare is reliant on federal law. I mean, that's most, any of the folks that end up in, in jail are, are on Medicaid or are Medicaid eligible, but that stops once they enter the jail, and we have to pick out the bill. That's, that's a mistake in federal law. And then, Chris, furthermore, I always take the opportunity to, to push for universal single-payer healthcare, which would take care of all this crap. But, but we are kind of stuck with wherever we're stuck, and so I'll offer a motion to accept the recommendation of the Jail Medical and Mental Health RFP Review Subcommittee.
Is there a second?
Second. I gotta admit, I gotta admit, right, like, to Nate's point, they told us they were gonna come in higher if they had to go out to RFP. To Tom's point, we knew they were the only game in town. We sent it to RFP anyways, and we're gonna be stuck paying hundreds of thousands of dollars more, you know, moving forward. Yes, they could increase their rates at any point, but this is a, this is a tough pill.
Yeah. I think we were just doing it till the end of the term, correct? They were gonna still bid again when our contract ran out, so we would have been doing that, but we were just.
How long did this process actually take? I mean, from the time we started to bid it out, or do the RFP, and then go through the committees and everything? How long was the process?
Well, I think they first came to us back in last September, October. I feel like I've been doing nothing but living and breathing this medical stuff for about a year now. I think we started actually writing the RFP, what, probably April or May, because I was gone until March, so.
Yeah.
Probably May, and then, and we got it posted by the end of, it was mid-July, late July.
And we hadn't.
That's what.
We really hadn't done this process for a really long time, like, I don't know, 20 years, maybe?
I believe '09 was the last time. I think '09 was the last time this was put out for RFP.
So it took, it took us some work to, to figure out how to do the RFP, quite honestly. It wasn't just the committee work on the selection, it was, a lot of work went into this process, so.
Yeah, there was a lot of work in building the RFP, and had, appreciate the input from Chris Davis, Michelle, Mike. The PDCM insurance was involved. We had, a lot of hands were involved in both writing it, and then obviously evaluating it as well.
That's why that 90-day clause is worthless. There's no way in heck that we could implement the 90-day clause and get a new service in there. So that's, that's, that's worthless in the contract.
Was it everybody's, I was gonna say, everyone's 90 days?
I don't think, I don't remember from the proposals that actually spells out the 90 days out. That's generally something more we're gonna get into.
What we do in the contract, but, but our RFP said that there have to be, I guess at least a 90-day out built into it. So you did second. All right, it's been moved and seconded. If there is no further discussion, please answer as your name is called.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
No.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck with renegotiating a little bit. Still not done. Item C, motion to submit the Sheriff's Office proposed budget for a vehicle and body worn camera system to Baker Tilly for ARPA eligibility evaluation.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Who's leading this discussion?
Good morning, Board. Al UIT Director. I assisted the Sheriff's Department with procuring some quotes.
procuring some quotes and just kinda getting an idea of what this project would entail. Currently, the body worn cameras and the car cameras do need to be replaced at the Sheriff's Office, so we've kind of been talking about the whole process, getting a few kind of broad estimates from some of the players in the game. I think there's only about three or four companies that are, that are involved. And so we would like to, I have submitted an ARPA request on behalf of the Sheriff's Department, that you guys have probably seen, and I guess, any questions I can answer for you?
And this is just sending for eligibility evaluation, correct? This isn't approving any dollars?
Yes. Any, no, probably not. This is just kinda the easier step to kinda move forward with it, so. Any questions or comments, Tom?
No, I'm fine.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. If there's no further questions, all in favor, say aye.
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 Proposed, same sign, motion carries. Item eight, work session, discussion about ARPA funds status and general reserve commitments.
Everybody's favorite topics, right?
It is, and I must say, I added this, as you all know, it was after the noon timeline. We have some guests coming at next week's meeting, I think we have, maybe, I'm not even sure, it could be the evidence intake building was maybe gonna be back on the agenda too, and somebody else will have to confirm that for me, but you and I is gonna be here. You had put a resolution on for them and the funding of their project, and I just thought probably rather than have a discussion while they're here on some of this, that we try to do it this week, if that's all right, so.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
All right, so I have updated the summary. It's probably been three weeks, three, four weeks since we looked at this last, so I'm just gonna focus on the overall summary right now, then we'll look at project details a little more.
I think Davis was gone then anyway, so this is, yeah, thank you.
So I have added now, there are two projects from the Sheriff's Office that, one you just approved, another we'll be discussing a little later, and I've gone ahead and put them in here, just to show us what is really left. So today, if all our projects don't require more resources than have been allocated in applications, we would have 1.7 million left, and that is combined from the replacement revenue pot and the, what I call the expense category pot, so it's not, it's everything. And as we go through some of the projects, I will talk more in detail about that amount.
So while it says available replacement funds, you're saying that's both?
That is both, yes, because if you scroll down to the expense allocation available, it is now showing at zero.
Okay. We haven't got there yet on your slide.
No, but, no, we hadn't, I know, I couldn't get all this to fit very well on one and still be able to read it, so. Yeah, so, yes, this is the total. I do think we potentially have some choices to make about which projects we want to put in the replacement revenue category versus the ARPA expense category, because as you can see on here, there is a negative amount in the available ARPA allocation of 7 million, and that is the amount we're gonna have to use replacement revenue for. You all probably remember that projects that we use replacement revenue for don't, we don't have all that federal red tape, and all the regulation doesn't necessarily apply to that, so it can reduce some effort, I guess I'll say, if, if we choose to do projects directly out of the replacement revenue. We have been holding off on that because we wanted to absorb what we could out of the expense categories first, but we are, we are at that point now. Then to talk about project details, and I know this is still gonna be hard to read, I've been trying to make it simpler, and it doesn't wanna be simpler, really, but let's see, I thought I could.
I just wanna make sure I'm following along here.
I was gonna say too, yeah, we have it in front of us maybe, but.
So we've got, available ARPA allocations is negative 7 million.
Right, so I transferred it up to the lost revenue, I can go back to that. So if you go up to the lost revenue, you'll see a positive transfer from ARPA specific allocation.
Yep.
With any luck, it's exactly the same amount as what I took out below.
Sure.
So that's, that's how I'm showing that we are transferring up there, without identifying specific projects. That's just the total.
Okay, so, so we, after sort of both pools of ARPA dollars is probably the easiest way to think.
It is, right.
We are, we are at 1.7 left?
Yes.
And that's including that seven that sort of moves around, okay?
Yep, yep.
Some discretion on our part.
Yes, yep.
Just wanna make sure I wasn't reading that as 5.3 negative.
Yeah, no, that was a good question. It was a good question. I added those rows so that, trying to show you how stuff's gonna be in either category, there's no easy way to really explain that, I don't think. The, the next schedule, that's one you're used to seeing, you've, you've seen it before, and I have it not at the top right now, so let's move it up there. I'm gonna go through the top ones pretty quickly, because we've already allocated those funds. There's a category at the very top that are things that have already been assigned, if you will, to the replacement revenue category. A lot of those are complete or well underway at this time. Then as you get to page two, we, we get into what I call the expense categories, things that qualified for specific items provided under the American Rescue Plan Act, and so we've been trying to keep those funded from there.
I have a question, and sorry to interrupt.
Nope.
You have, like, some of these are completed, obviously, and there's some underway. I know Cedar Valley Nature Trail underway, large, huge job. Vehicles underway from the Health Department, what does that mean, I guess, underway?
They still have some vehicles, yes, that'd be a good idea, Caitlin, since Caitlin's still here.
I'll speak to that real quick. We do still have two vehicles that were approved to purchase that we got bids for, that we've not received the vehicles for. We did ask them to tell us whether they were going to be able to deliver those vehicles or not, because the bid included a 2023 model year, now getting to the end of 2023. We've had it happen before, where they've canceled the order, because the manufacturer's no longer making that model year, so we're trying to prevent that from happening. But we do still have two vehicles that we have not received, that we have received bids for, and I think they're 24,000 apiece, so it's about 48,000 total.
Thank you.
Pandemic is still affecting us. That's my conclusion with that. Anything else you wanna talk about in the lost replacement revenue category?
No, just trying to keep up on your pages, I guess, without.
So I'm moving to page two, and your, your pages of this section are numbered, so if that helps, I'll try to.
Yep.
All right, try to talk about that. And I don't, Cedar Valley Nature Trail, for example, a lot of that work has been done this summer and fall, but if you remember, that's being let in separate divisions, so one division's finished, was funded with multiple sources, and now we're moving to the next. So there's more work to do.
Same thing as with Washburn, pump pounds?
Yes, yep.
Thank you.
And I'm, I'm not gonna go through each project. I think we've, the ones that are approved and under construction, I think we're probably pretty well aware of. Page three is more of the same. It's kinda fun to see when things are complete, but at least they're underway now. And page four is more of the same. And page five. And six.
Sorry, on page five, you got a couple maybe new statuses that we hadn't seen in the first few pages?
Okay.
So they're not started. Can you just speak a little bit to what that, what that means?
It's, what I mean is, we haven't awarded a contract to begin construction. There is, there is probably underlying planning being done, it's just not, we don't have a contract in place yet.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. It has been approved by the board, however, so it's, it's just being worked on. And there's, especially when we get into the building renovations, there are timing, we gotta plan, timing issues of when to do things, so that everyone can keep working and get things done properly.
And I know there was still some work being done on the RFP on our end for the mobile clinic, I think, last week, okay? Okay.
And the jail lobby is currently under renovation, so that one's moving along. We are getting close, as Rory already referred to this morning, on some of the courthouse renovation projects, but that's one of the things that I wanna talk about today. So for the treasurer and election in particular, we're very close to being able to release an RFP, I think, for construction, but the numbers that you see in here, they are estimates that the architects provided, but almost before doing the detailed design, so in my mind, those are pretty early construction estimates. And in all the years of my experience in other places, it's, it would be very unusual to be renovating older buildings and not encounter things that ultimately aren't even in the contract, so I will be very surprised, happily, if we're able to do these jobs for the amounts that are listed in here. It's one of the things I think we all need to keep in the back of our mind, that it is likely, you know, that there will be more cost with some projects that we've already kinda given preliminary approval to.
No, in those, in those bids, there's usually some level of contingency, or not in the bids, in the, in those preliminaries, there's usually a contingency, right? But I don't know.
I just think a lot, no, he had to step out, I think.
I just don't know how, how far that deviates typically, recognizing that the building, to your point, is, is an older building.
For all those projects, quite honestly, I mean, as far as the remodels, the jail lobby renovation, but the Recorders, Treasures, any of those can be, we're all, and all of those were from the space assessment study, is that kinda where we took those numbers, estimates? Oh, I guess we need Rory.
Yeah, I believe with the treasurer and the elections, those have probably been refined a little bit since the space allocation study, but I think they probably have more to do yet, because I know as we really got down to the nitty gritty of what's going where and what do we need, I think things look, look different than, certainly far different than they were in the space study. Hopefully, maybe by January, we'll have better numbers for those, at least for the initial contract award.
So we're thinking that's a timeline, about when we try to get those, I mean, only guess.
That is a timeline we were working with. I don't know whether we're still on that timeline or not.
Yeah, not to put you under the gun, but I was gonna say, we have that 24 December, 24 timeline, and then December 26th timeline.
We do, and that's, again, that, it's gonna become more important what projects get designated to be done with replacement revenue, because they also don't have those deadlines attached to them. Oh, true, but that's why it, it really will become a little bit of a balancing act to choose the right category for each project here. I, I think the category, I will mention, you, you saw that I moved, now the board meeting audio visual got moved to ones that's approved. That was not that way the last time we talked. The ones I'm probably, that are different, that I think we might wanna think about more today, under projects awaiting review and approval, we saw the Health Department, which that amount truly is from, I believe, the space study, correct me if I'm wrong, yeah. So it's truly a pre, pre-construction estimate, so we, I would expect refinements in that as we move through the process. I've also added to this category, I put the two new Sheriff's applications, which one now was just approved to move forward, so that needs to move up, but I wanted to show how we got to the new category totals.
I think we've had several conversations about that probably not being quite what the cost will be, if that's the decision we'd go, but, yeah.
For the Health Department, yeah.
For the Health Department, that it'd be larger, so.
It's a, it's a guestimate right now, I would call it. And other future projects to be submitted, we have talked about these in the past. Rory has some building HVAC he's hoping to do, and there's a couple more projects for the Washburn sewer system.
I was gonna, I wanted to back up a little bit to some of these other Washburn sewer system ones. Yeah, check, I wanted to check the data when we approved, like, the second large halves of these, like the dredging and the backup generators.
Oh, as, it's my understanding, those were all approved originally, and we, we could still change that, those have not been, they're not underway yet.
Because honestly, I mean, we heard last week, you know, LaPorte City, they're increasing their rates, you know, $90 a month. I think those, I think all these that haven't been started should be on hold until the Washburn rates are adjusted.
Okay, and when would the board like to talk about adjusting rates, because that's what has to happen. That's our responsibility, because it's our system, so we can, we can do that.
Is that something we want on a work session?
Yeah.
Or agenda item, whatever, I guess.
That looks like it's around 600,000.
Yeah, yep.
And we'll need some information, I guess, too, at some point on what we're thinking and, yeah, before we present to them, although they'll be well aware of what we're talking. Any thoughts on that, Tom? I was gonna say, we're all kinda, as we're sitting here talking about that, does that sound like a good agenda item or work session?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
We've talked about that. Okay, anything, other ones, Chris, you said there were some.
Yep, those are.
Okay, then the categories, some of the categories we really have not been talking about. There is a list of original requests, not approved, reviewed or approved. That includes things that were talked about early on, jail addition, evidence intake, and then there's quite a list of others. Many of those, and I've gone back and added notes, where we, some of them are moved to our regular CIP program, but there are others in here, that premium pay is still listed on here, which I think probably it is too late for that at this point, with the pandemic declaration being removed. Then we have.
I think they were probably just left on there, so that we were reminded that they were requested, or were talked about and discussed, but not, so they didn't fall off the list for us, so, thank you.
And then we've added several of the external requests that are on this list, whether we choose to fund them through ARPA or not. And I won't go through those, but you've got them in front of you. And we do also have a section of projects that we actually decided not to do, too. Some of them have been done other ways, but there, there is that list of things. I think that's all the things that we have talked about under ARPA that I'm aware of. I know people ask about how much different departments are getting, so I, the summary's been updated now for the changes that we've made, primarily with the Sheriffs, I guess.
Based on requests, not necessarily.
Correct, I just, I'm trying to do this holistically as a budget tool, so that you kind of know what's undesignedated, so I'm trying to include in here every application that's been turned in. And I know I just got another one this morning that's not on here, but I couldn't get it on yet, so that will.
A new request, you mean?
Pardon me?
A new request?
Yes, yep.
So these, okay, let's see, this is, this does not account for, uh, how do you have it labeled? Do you have it under the original requests?
Yes, this does not include those last two categories on there, the original requests, not reviewed or approved. Yes, this, this does not include those last two categories on there, the original requests, not reviewed or approved and the denied. I didn't put them in these numbers, but everything else is. Yep. All right, then I'm gonna
So there, so you're saying the two sheriff's requests aren't included in this, and there's also one today?
They are.
Oh, okay, they are, all right.
Huh?
The two sheriffs are in here because the on hold category is included.
So the two sheriff requests being?
The body cameras and
The two for today
Oh.
Just that are included, just to think.
Gotcha, for today.
The two new ones.
Yep. Evidence intake is not on there.
It is not.
Got it.
Because you have, you took action to take it off, so I want you to take action to put it back on if you wanted to do that.
And it needs action, you know. And the one you got today is not.
No.
Do we know what kind of project that is? What department?
It's an IT.
That's another IT request?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Shouldn't those, shouldn't those requests come to the Board of Supervisors? So where, where they are, I mean, is it still wide open?
They will.
Anybody? I?
I mean, they will come to you, we, it just hasn't, there's no way to get it on the agenda when it came today. It, it'll, we send them, well, historically, you've had them go to the committee first, I assume you still want to do that.
Yeah, typically, we had the committee received them and forwarded them to the board, and my understanding, I haven't seen what Michelle's talking about yet, it just literally came this morning, so.
Literally. So well, yeah, they will come before any action goes, that's why it's not anywhere on the list, I wouldn't add it until you've done, seen it. I talked about it anyway, I mean, with the exception, the only things that you haven't seen an application for and it's been talked about probably since the very beginning of ARPA is the Rory's HVAC. Parts of that are being done with other projects, which is why we're holding off on that to figure out what, what's getting done where.
Well, it'd be more important, we haven't received anything with regard to those either, so we haven't had anything to forward to the board on that.
And maybe, maybe Caitlin can correct me on this, but I see some things I think the science has proven are not, like the ultraviolet light, I don't think that that's actually a, but I don't know.
Rory's back.
Yeah, there's different thoughts out there. Filtration is really what, what they're queuing in on right now, better filtration. There are some discussions about how effective the, the UV lights are. As we are working with our engineers, you know, looking at our HVAC system, like Michelle had indicated, you know, with our several other projects that are going on, that all kind of plays into that one larger project. I think I had mentioned, too, a few weeks back, with that ARPA application, we're looking at combining all three large sites together, so we really need to get a handle on what this remodel project here at the courthouse ends up looking like, and then that will kind of dictate how this application gets filled out. But yeah, as far as the UV, there's, there's different arguments out there as far as the effectiveness of it. And so what we will probably be looking at is more of the filtration, exhaust, getting the air essentially having more controls on air coming in, air going out, and how it's filtered. Does that answer?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are we ready to move on? Everyone looks like, you look like you have headaches. All right, I, I have to figure out how to switch over to my PowerPoint, so this might take us a minute.
No questions?
As related, I keep getting questions about fund balance, and it's a hard time of year to work this in, but I've tried to do it. So general fund balance, I mean, really, I think the basic question for all of us is, does, does the government need it? Some of the external sources we have available to us, one that's important, at least to me, is Moody's Investors Services. They look, and this is according to the Government Finance Officers Association, that they look for a minimum of 35% of annual revenue to get the best rating. And that does several things for us, it does make, can make a difference in the interest rate, but it also indicates your willingness to follow good financial policy, I guess is how Alfred said. So I think, I hope, it's important to us to retain that. The Government Finance Officers Association also has published a best practice, it was done in 2015. They were recommending a minimum of two months of annual revenue, but with caveat that the government should adjust as necessary depending on their particular circumstances. So in Iowa, oftentimes, three months is a popular figure, which would be 25%. And the reason for that is because most governments in Iowa receive most of their general revenue twice a year, you receive half of it generally October 15th, that's your first installment of property tax, and you receive the second one April 15th. So our payroll runs about 1.1 million every two weeks. So if you, if you were starting from scratch, let's say you had zero fund balance on July 1st, you would have to cover, you know, $9 million in payroll prior to getting that property tax. And I realize there are other sources of revenue that we get from, but really, property tax is our largest, so that's one of the reasons that you need to maintain some fund balance, because you need to have that cash flow. And other things that we should want to think about, I think, one of the things that fund balance can do is cushion against volatility, and that would be including things like natural disasters. We all know we've had some pretty major flooding issues here. And while FEMA is there to help you through that, it generally takes a while to get that cash. So you need cash to put out, to do whatever you need to do before you get cash back from FEMA. And, you know, floods, derechoes was a new term, at least to me, when, when we had that in Cedar Rapids, and hopefully we don't have anymore, but you never know. Then we have other manmade types of disasters, like cyber attacks, I'm just picking an example. And we do have some insurance for that, it's, I believe it's, well, it's limited, I'll, I'll put it that way. So you might have other costs that you need to do, at least before that comes in, so you might want to set aside some for that. Another one that I think is important to us right now is anticipated legislative changes that might reduce our future revenue abilities. And we know, we have one going on right now, and that's the new property tax law. They're changing the way homestead credits work. And there's information I don't have yet, we've already budgeted for '24, assuming we were gonna receive homestead credit information. There'll be an adjustment to that based on what was passed last spring. And we, you know, whatever else comes our way in the future, we don't know. We also have talked about previously that if the treasury comes back and says, well, you did that project under ARPA, but it didn't qualify, there have been, there's been discussion about keeping some fund balance in case we would have to repay that. Certainly hope that's not going to occur, but it's just something we've talked about that could occur. And other things that it's nice to do, we can accumulate resources to do future capital purchases so that you don't have to do it all at once. And another opportunity that we had, I believe they talked about having the abstract this morning, but having enough cash in the bank to take advantage of an opportunity such as when the former Raymount building came up for sale. It's, is very nice to be able to say, yeah, we've got money, that we can go do that, and not have to wait until the next formal budget process. So those are just some of the things you might want to consider when we're talking about, do we, do we need fund balance and how much do we need? And I'm gonna switch back again. Hopefully. Nope, that wasn't it. This, we also looked at the next thing. Already, excuse me. As soon as I find it. Try not to have too many windows open, but today I do. Whoops, nope, that's not it either. Well, hope I didn't close it accidentally. All right. Sorry about that, there we go. So we also talked about, I was, I mostly wanted to focus on the chart, I think it's easier, and it's easier for me in my mind to remember the line than it is a bunch of numbers, so it says just throwing numbers at you. I wanted to show the chart of what it appears, and at this point, I'm just kind of excluding 2023. I believe we will have some increase, but we're, we're close to having numbers, we're just not quite there yet. So I'm showing you the actual history from '18 through '22. Then in '24, I am anticipating that declining, and I'll show you why on the next chart in just a moment. And then continuing to decline those through 2027, that's as far as I projected it. So if we look at the numbers that we talked about, oh, where are my numbers? Well, it's on a slide, but there's nothing there, all right. We're on back to the chart, and we will just talk about them. I think you have this in front of you, too.
That slide?
So the last, yes, the, the actual numbers, if you want to look at numbers. I'm just gonna keep reminding you that during the '24 budget process, we did choose to budget 2.5 million from general fund balance for capital, that's how we budgeted our capital. We have, since that time, we've also committed 200,000 to CAT grant matching funds, and I'm including in there 50,000 to the City of Waterloo, which was done, I believe, in 2022. It has not been paid yet. And then the Raymount building purchase of about 325, and Rory was estimating necessary improvements of that at 300, so I've just put that in here for purposes of discussion. And if you'll remember, we also started trying to budget turnover factor for vacant positions, so I've got that in here at about 1.2 million. So we're, we're budgeting to use a pretty good chunk over 4 million of our fund balance by June of 2024. That's based on a lot of assumptions, right? I, each, each department has been allocated 100% of their budget. I don't know how their performance will come in, but I, for now, because they have the ability to spend it, I have assumed that they will, for lack of a better, a better thing.
Sorry, I just wanted
Go ahead.
So the Waterloo CAT grant, that was 50,000, I just wanted to make sure that, that I'm understanding practice as we hear the numbers. So even though that was budgeted, that was budgeted in a previous year or no?
It was never budgeted, that's
Okay, so then
One thing we've been doing is we commit funds that aren't, we haven't really budgeted first, yeah.
So then, but that's not coming, that's not represented in the designated?
No, not for
Okay.
Not yet, it will be this year, it will be at June of '23 when we put that out, but right, it has not been.
Right.
That's true. So, yeah. So there is a, a large chunk there, we, when I first started doing this, I estimated another 3 million. Simply because we had about 3 million in 2024, estimated another 3 in 2025, which we may or may not do. But if you do that, you know, there's just consequences to that. So in the year that you're doing that, we're increasing our expenses and reducing our fund balance, which makes that percentage drop. So that would take it down to 42% at June, by June of '25. And after that, I've only allowed for that turnover factor, and when I say that, I'm assuming that your departments don't need it. So I'm saying we're gonna take that full million out of fund balance, and that gets us down to about 38% by June of 2027.
And that is also assuming, understandably, that this isn't questioning, but
Yeah.
That's also assuming that expenses are, are what's budgeted when historically that, that hasn't been, which is good, right? Our departments are budgeting to make sure that they aren't having to come back later, but that does maybe skew a little bit of these projections, because we're projecting they're gonna spend all of it when historically they have not.
That's true, it, it assumes several things, it assumes they spend all the money they're budgeted, it assumes their revenue comes in only as budgeted, either not higher or lower, either way. And yes, and that we would need all of that turnover factor to come from fund balance. I think having that fund balance is one of the things that gives us the ability to tax less and assume we're going to have that turnover because people don't have to be, we aren't implementing hiring freezes, or, you know, when you have a vacancy that you have to wait six months to fill it. It may take some time to fill it, just to get through the process and find a candidate, but we aren't requiring you to do that. And so having some fund balance gives us the ability to be more flexible. So you're right, it definitely does include a lot of assumptions. I know reality will be something different, and I hope it will be higher, but, you know, you don't know. So those are just other things to think about as we, that I just need, I just want you to think about them before you make choices.
I asked a week
Go ahead, Tom.
Michelle, I asked a week, oh, did we get our ending budget June 31st on how the county fair, as far as revenues and expenditures, where we ended up at?
Yeah, not yet, that's what I said, we're in the middle, we're getting very close to finishing that for the audit, as, as you know, we, we do our audit on a accrual basis, so we're, we're trying very hard to finish up receivables right now. We, shockingly, are still getting revenue that relates to services provided prior to June. Another reason you need fund balance, because we've paid for all that, you know, and we're just now getting it back. But we are, we are getting close, so we will be able to do that pretty soon, which would be a good thing.
You don't have any inkling on where the revenues or the expenditures ended up in, if we were bringing some back or we had to put money out?
I think we are bringing some back, I don't, I don't know the amount or the level right now.
Okay.
I mean, there's a
The only
Go ahead.
The only, the only concern I've had over budgeting over the last few years is seems like we got in the mode that if a department budget is just say $100 for something, and it comes in under budget at $75, the departments kind of think that's extra money. And that's not the case, it used to always come back into the reserves, but now they have a tendency to be spending that, calling it extra money. And another thing that you brought up too, Michelle, about the homestead credit, the state kind of plays with that. There was a year on the board where the state eliminated the veterans' credit, and the Board of Supervisors picked that credit up for that year, if I recall, and paid it. So it's always a possibility that when you're dealing with the state, and when they cut back, we have to make up the difference.
Kind of that commercial and industrial tax at one time, too.
Yep, there's been a lot of
Even then, they, they rebated this for a little while and then stopped that, yeah.
There's, yeah, and it seems that's the philosophy of our legislature today, so you don't know what they're gonna take away from us next, I guess. There was something I was gonna You mentioned, reminded me of something, and now I forgot.
You mentioned close to having that information for '23, is that
We can probably have preliminaries, let's say preliminaries within a month. The audit obviously could uncover other things, so that could change, but I think within a month, we'll be able to give you a preliminary. I hope I'm being very conservative with saying that, month.
End of November, something like that, yeah. End of November, something like that, yeah.
Any other questions or is that enough to absorb for today?
I do think maybe as, as we approach this next year's budget, we're not thinking about have a more sustainable balance for the funding of capital items between, where is, between using some fund balance, but also just incorporating more of that into the tax revenue.
And I did not, I did not put everything in fund balance. So there is some coming out of the annual allocation. Yeah. And yes, I would hope we can continue to do that. We also, last year, a lot of the department requests were funded. Where I, I have information out to the departments asking for more detailed, I guess, five-year plans so that we can kind of start seeing what that might look like and figure out if we can, you know, incorporate enough in each annual operating budget to not have it be spiking up and down when you have a large project. That would be my goal. I prefer to have it, you know, remain on a relatively even keel with that.
I think we all felt that way as well. It seemed like at, at one time, and all of us were in agreement, that we wanted to avoid the spikes and valleys. Try to keep it consistent for taxpayers, but much as we could.
Just a, a quick follow-up on, I don't know if it's the next page from this or if it's a different.
Yeah, it's the next.
If, if it's a different one, I apologize.
I don't know when I, I seem to have nothing in this file. I don't know how I did that.
Just do it with my memory, what we have.
Well, the, yeah, yeah. You can look at my piece of paper.
We have nothing.
So where you break down the general unassigned balance and the, you know, the decreases year over year.
Yep.
Where you've got that turnover factor. So we're, and, and I, I understand and appreciate sort of the, the conservative approach. We didn't budget for a million dollars on the staffing side, but that's, is this also then assuming sort of worst-case scenario that we use all million dollars or?
Right, this is worst case. So we did budget, that, this is, so this is how I did it. We did budget that everybody was going to have their positions filled all year. So we're not going to require any one department to, to absorb a vacancy period. So I did that by saying I'm going to pull that million out of fund balance when we set the tax rate.
Sure. Okay, so then. So this is, but, but these drops are assuming that we're losing a mil.
They are.
Saying losing, but we're spending a million dollars out of undesigned.
Yes.
When.
I did, because we don't have, because I can't.
We can't just, we can't just remake the money. I, I get that part.
And I.
But just making the assumption and as we're looking at the projections.
And hopefully that will not happen.
That does attribute to some of these drastic drops is when we're pulling a million dollars out.
That reminds me of the thing I want to talk about that I didn't, I don't feel like the last three years are very representative of county operations. The pandemic has affected us, maybe in ways none of us anticipated, but filling vacant positions and having employees leave is, I think, two of the impacts we've experienced with the pandemic. I think our departments are all hoping that that will slow and we'll be able to fill positions and retain them now, which might change what we're seeing here. So, and we also, you know, I can't tell you that I'm going to, that budgets are going to work exactly like they have the last three years. I probably do some things differently than maybe others have. So it's difficult for me to say that what's happened the last three years is going to continue. I.
The ARPA.
I don't think it will. I don't expect it.
ARPA alone impacted us greatly, basically.
Yeah, so it, that's another reason I didn't want to make assumptions.
So we used the two and a half million last budget of our, not.
Or 24, yeah.
Reserves, I'm sorry.
Correct. Of 20, that was reserves that were transferred.
You have included in here the 3 million for 25.
That's a future transfer that hasn't been decided on. It was just an idea that either can be done or not be done. And I think the first time I showed this, I also had, did another version without that 3 million being spent.
I think the other last time.
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
I was trying to show you the impacts of what you choose to do. And I don't know what that is right now, so I just kind of pick some numbers out of the air and put them in front of you. What I would like to propose, we do at least for part of that. I understand there is a delay in when we're really able to tell you what our accrual basis fund balance is at each year end. I would like to propose, if we see growth in that, that we would consider using it in the next budget we set. So right now, we'll be going into 2025 budget. We'll know that amount as we go into that. I, I think it would make sense financially for you to consider using that either for projects or to reduce taxes, whatever you choose. But I think it just makes it easier to plan. Fund balance decisions, I think it's maybe easier to have those be longer term. So if we figure out a plan of what we want to do with the extra earned, basically it's going to be from 2023, right? But if we do it in 25, that will let us have that time to plan it and figure out how we want to use it.
Okay, I was thinking, why wouldn't you use it in 24? Obviously you're in 24.
Because we're already, that's what's hard. I know, it feels like a long delay, but it, it really isn't in terms of things actually happening here.
So whatever the overage would be.
Assuming there's an overage.
That's not correct.
Well, let's hope so, yeah, let's say it is.
In 25.
Yeah.
And then determine how you'd like to use it.
Yep, right. And you, if you wanted, I mean, even just a commitment to use it with maybe a pool that you would determine later can happen too.
When is, when is the audit typically completed?
Well, last year's my first year.
Sure.
And we squeaked it in on December 31st because.
So, so typically though, we've got that number leading into the upcoming budget session, so.
Right, which, and that's exactly why I'm suggesting.
So we're using real numbers.
Yes, that, I think it would make us all more comfortable if we know that number and that's what we're using and yes.
And then we just, we wouldn't have to, but we'd do that going forward every time, every year, we'd be using it for the next.
Right, that would be my suggestion. Just as our thought process that, yes, I would think that would make sense to, that's how your normal process would go.
And it gets us to the point that we've, I think, all of us have discussed on some level, that we're not continuing to grow the reserves.
Right.
If we're utilizing the dollars that have already been collected and taxed for our future projects.
I think, yeah, collectively, that is one thing I think all of us, and not to speak for all of us, I think have said, that we knew the high, number was high, we wanted to reduce it and put it to use, but, yeah. So that's good. I mean, great to have everybody in agreement.
You're just.
I know, I know one part that I don't, um, um, there's a lot of moving parts to kind of figure out what a best.
Yes, there are.
It would be, but, um, you know, we do have revenue off of reserves too. And there was.
Yes, and that's.
It wasn't too many years ago that we, we had to budget, I think around half a million for the treasurer's office, which usually generates enough.
Oh, I see.
But that year, but that year they didn't. So we had half a million to have to budget that year. And so I, I wonder, I mean, is it, if you're like, the average returns per million dollars over the last?
And we, we could probably do that. Obviously this year has completely changed that picture. I, I just don't remember the number off the top of my head, but I'm pretty sure we're, we've probably earned more than a million dollars more than they budgeted for 2023 for a couple of reasons. For one thing, rates went from a tenth of a percent to maybe three or four, depending what we have invested in. But the other thing you have to remember is we temporarily have the benefit of the ARPA money. That, that interest is going to the general fund as was specified under the law. And as we spend that down, that's, you know, that's going to take a huge chunk of revenue earning capacity away from us too. So, yeah, you're right, there are a ton of moving parts and that's why it's not easy to just tell you this is, this is what we can do.
Anyway, that was a particularly difficult budget year. And so I want to just flag that possibility.
Yeah. That's right.
And they, we won't have that, I don't think, in 24 or 25. I don't know after that. It's hard to have a crystal ball about where rates will go.
Yes. They did better than I think we thought they would for this year.
I mean, yes. Rates are higher than I ever thought they would be right now.
But looking at it, yeah, to me, that sounds like a very good recommendation just because we could take advantage of like, say, when it's a really good year. We've got lots of factors into that that provide that larger amount, but it helps us plan.
Yes.
And reduce taxes or whatever we choose to do. I assume you didn't create this system, others do use it.
I assume that's true.
Okay.
I know Cedar Falls was in the paper a while ago. They're, it's pretty amazing how quickly they get their books closed, but, um, yeah, they did do this.
This type of, that's how they planned.
Yeah, they did, they came back and said they had, I, I don't remember the terms that were in the paper, but that they had money, let's just say left from 2024, that then they allocated to some projects.
For 25, for the.
For, yeah, in the current year, yeah.
And they can be, like we said, capital projects or whatever we like to use it for.
Yeah, you would, right.
Yeah. That's where the five-year plan, now, when do you expect to have like the projects that are in those five-year plans? Or I know you said you sent something.
Yeah, I tried, tried to give departments a number of weeks because I really wanted them to put some thought into that longer-term planning and not just this year. So I did not ask for them to be returned until November 1st. But obviously, they can all do it sooner than that if they can and turn it into us. Yeah, I'm really hoping, I would like to, I would really feel better if I had a five-year plan and kind of had an idea, could figure out a way to tweak that plan so that we're doing about approximately the same amount every year and covering what, you know, the high priority needs are. It's, this is, this will be my first time trying this here, so we'll see how it goes.
Well, I know we've talked about it different times, like I say, because of our reserves and where they're at and, and what we want to do with those, whether it's county projects, maybe there's been some other thoughts and opinions. But I thought that, that to me seems important to know what county projects are out there. So when we're making decisions on if we have money to give to others or how much or whatever we want to do with it, knowing that we're, we've at least looked at those county projects and what our county projects are and we're deciding to put our dollars somewhere else.
Yeah, and, you know, the fact that we, we are drawing down two and a half million of our reserves right now for capital, that obviously is not sustainable probably for very long. And we've also used the ARPA dollars in ways that reduce our future tax requirements. So that, that's what I'm hoping to get to a more, more even pattern.
Remember when we first got that money, we weren't sure we, how we were going to spend it or if we'd be able to spend it fast enough, or not fast enough, but put it to use in that short a timeline? Of course, I guess the timeline's still kind of taking.
We're working hard trying to get that done.
Everybody is, like I said, the, the projects just go slower than you'd like.
Yeah, it takes a while.
So, so that I am clear on this though, well, you've got the 3 million in for 25. Nothing's in 26 and 27.
No, just the, just the turnover factor.
Yeah, just the turnover factor, but we're assuming those would, I mean, you are, I mean, assumptions only. I don't mean that there would be.
I'd like to assume that'll be zero drawdown, but.
Yeah. So they're just estimates at this point in time, but it still puts us at a lower level. I don't know if we've had any discussion. We haven't bored officially as far as where we'd like to be or see, but I think we, different ones of us have made comments of where. And I guess the other timeline part of that would be when? Not to just utilize all of our overage or whatever one calls it in a year or maybe more. I don't know. We don't need to have that discussion today, I just, if you have comments, it was.
Food for thought today, it's pre-.
Yep.
Takes some, it requires some thought, everybody needs to think about it.
Well, we've got some large projects. If they were smaller projects, but I think those building projects are, yeah, the sooner we can find what those dollars are going to be, that puts a lot of.
That'll help.
Down to those, yeah, what those are, if the overages are in all those, what that's going to be.
I would just note that, I know that at times it sounds as if there's been capital funds within departments for expected, for instance, body cameras. I understand why we're looking at it through ARPA, but I also, if we know what's going to need to be replaced, it really should be something that we're investing in every single year so that we don't have this $750,000 shoe that drops every five years. But instead budgeting, that's, that's a bit more practice and I, I get that that's a couple of months down the road in the conversation, but.
Yeah, it gets difficult because of technology. You can't always, you can't always phase every project over five years. But what my hope would be is, let's say we need to replace those body cameras every five years. So I need 750 in year five. I would hope I can do other people's projects that maybe accumulate to 750 in the other four years. And then you get to a year where we do body cameras. And the year after that, you do something else. But you, that's what, that's what my hope.
That's why the five-year plan.
That's why the five-year plan. And not that it's not going to, I, you know, not all I can tell you about it is a plan and I know it will change every year. But if you have a starting point, I really think it can help us try to determine long-term.
Even as staff.
How to do those things and replace them on a regular.
Once, even, it's good, I think, even for staff. Once they see what other departments have in theirs, everybody, they can prioritize projects that maybe could wait another year or.
Right, exactly.
Their horizon, so. Okay, so. I know we've had them ask before, you know, for five-year plans. There've been some of the departments obviously that have done it, some.
Some do.
Have not.
Yeah.
So maybe the, if we can get everyone to participate, and I think we should be able to do that.
It's hard to think of everything.
If you have any projects you want to have prioritized, you might want to get a budget in. Well, thanks.
All right.
All right.
Any other, Tom, any more questions or comments?
Just a side note, Michelle briefly mentioned the commercial tax. That's come, that's coming to an end, you're pretty soon with the backfill. And when that's done, it's said, that's about a million point one the county's going to lose in revenue. So you better be looking for that here. I don't know, I think there's a couple more years left to backfill.
I'm sure.
Goes down each year.
It does go down each year and I think we might already be down to about 500 or 600,000. And I'm sorry, I haven't looked at that for a while, but you're right. That is another revenue source that's declining.
And there were several years, correct me, Tom, if I'm wrong in this, but there were several years that we weren't sure what they were going to do to us and we designated, or maybe you remember too, that we put in more money just because we were ready for them to yank it from us. And so we budgeted for it and.
And again, that's another way probably your fund balance grew.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were always deciding whether to budget it at 75% or 50% because the state doesn't tell us what they're going to do.
And it's been so hard, it's been so difficult to know. So that's another, again, that's another thing why it's really helpful to have that fund balance as a cushion so that when they, and unfortunately, I, I wish they would require, you know, when they make a change that they do it for years after, when people have already set their budgets. That has not been their habit recently. So it helps us a lot that we have that cushion. If they do change something, you know, we're not worrying about.
They'd have to be a little class of basic government class.
We, we knew this was coming. I mean, it was just a matter of time.
Just when.
And if you get a chance to talk to TJ over there, Blackout County is one of the few counties that had very little commercial growth. So we're, we're going to flat out lose about a million dollars in revenue when it's done and over with. And that's a lot of money.
Yeah. So, and I don't know if this is fair, and please say if it's not to, to ask the question then. We've had communities and different ones too approaching us and we know, whether it's for ARPA dollars or just making requests for funding. And we had mentioned, we'd like to have a better feel, I guess, for our projects and our dollar amounts. And, and as you said too, now the numbers that maybe you'd have, I hate to put like a time on it, like you said, November. But what are our thoughts on waiting till we have some of that information, I guess, before we make some decisions on, you know, there's been just communities that have come forward and that type of thing. I'm just curious, no action or anything formal action, but just wondering what thoughts are.
I'm still comfortable moving forward. And, and hearing the presentations and considering those, but, I mean, you know, it's good, it's good food for thought. considering those, but, I mean, you know, it's good, it's good food for thought.
Just a thought, I just meant for a consistent message to, you know, to them as well, if they approaching all of us or that we are working on things and trying to get numbers, it isn't just that we're wanting the people to wait, but we didn't know where we were, I guess.
I mean, it is helpful that we are getting closer to having some real numbers on, on both what the performance was this last year, but also, most important to me, on the public health innovations.
Now that Rory's given us a good report on all the others, we'll get him going on this one a little more. We know, we need some of that information, you're right, Chris. Sooner the better. Is there anything else, too, that we need information on? I mean, that would help us with any of this.
I don't know if I can...
Appreciate the time and effort. I know you didn't really have it with auditors coming this week and whatever, too, so thanks for taking some time to do it. Yep, thanks very much. So, anything else? I mean, anything else to be, just, us comments or whatever, because we do have the closed session to move into?
I'm ready.
Okay, great. Item number nine, closed session. This is a resolution that pursuant to the provisions of Iowa Sections 21.51K and 22.750, the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors shall proceed into closed session for discussion of information concerning physical and/or critical infrastructure, security, security procedures, and emergency preparedness where disclosure could reasonably be expected to jeopardize county property.
So moved.
Second.
Removed and seconded. Please answer as your name is called.
Little.
Yes.
Short.
Yes.
All.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Don't worry, don't worry. Oh, okay, great, all right. Motion to adjourn the supervisors' meeting, closed session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Item 10, any reports or information from the board? I thought that was going to be a close, okay. All right, thank you. Anybody for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.